Today, would you please stand and Commissioner Dick will lead us.
Wait.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us today and the wonderful opportunities that we have every day. Please be with those who are struggling because of the recent weather. Please speed their recovery and strengthen their communities as they work through those issues. Please watch over all those that serve and protect our community. And please help us be wise and seek the truth in all that we do. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, is there any additions or corrections to the May 21 meeting? The minutes.
Good job.
Okay, approved as submitted. This is public comment time for anyone that wants to speak and address the commission. That's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here from the, that's running for city commission besides these three up here? I didn't think there was, okay. All right, moving on. Where's Matt?
He's coming. So after public comment, we have 6A, which is Mayor Kate Cowsor and City Manager Allen would like to take this opportunity to recognize Bob Quinn.
Ally.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Patricia Hernandez and I am the Safety Committee Chair. I have been on the Safety Committee since October of 2018 and have been Safety Committee Chair since February. Each quarter, all employees may submit nominations to recognize those who go above and beyond the normal duties to help improve the safety of their department, organization, or to motivate employees to take that extra step with safety. The Safety Committee selects one recipient per quarter that receives a personal day that can be used throughout the course of the year. At the end of the year, one of the quarterly winners will be selected as the annual individually individual safety recognition recipient and will receive $175. The Safety Committee at this time selected Bob Quinn, Fleet Manager, for the Public Works Department. Bob was nominated by Sam Curran. Sam provided the committee with the following information regarding Bob's work practices. Bob increased employee safety awareness, directly influenced the safety completion of a job slash project, and increased employee department safety knowledge. Bob did this by attending training and after the training recognized and identified areas for improvement in the city's heating system. If not corrected, the city could have seen employee injuries or worse and/or building damage. The city's heating system was replaced on January 4th of 2019. The Safety Committee would like to commend Bob on his actions by enhancing the safety of others and utilizing safety training appropriately. The Safety Committee would also like to thank Sam for his nomination. At this time, I'd like to invite Bob to come up and accept his award.
Bob.
You migrate over here.
You tell me.
Ready? One, two, three, four. One, two.
Commissioners, item 7A, this city has received lineup changes from Cox. Those of you are aware that they are required into their franchise to let us know that. We put it in the packet just as a way to distribute that information to anyone who might be interested. The rest of the items are monthly reports. You might notice that there's two from the Neighborhood and Development Services Department. And they spent some time after the retreat where their report was discussed a little bit and some things that they might be able to change. So I'm gonna have Caleb come up and point out to you and all of us where those changes were made. And then you've got two months' worth of reports that this has been, this has been applied to.
Yes, so to kind of give a little bit of better transparency and ability to look at the maps, we added a map that wasn't there before. You had the list and you have the chart. And now the maps kind of give the location of exactly where you can see the investments are going into the communities. And our report covers all three jurisdictions. So you can see throughout each of the jurisdictions, this one being the county, location of their permits that have been pulled. And of course, the counties may shrink a little bit depending if they're further out, some of those permits. And then as you go to the city's report, you'll see that it is zoomed in even more to where those locations are within the city limits. And I think it's, it was kind of interesting, once we plugged this in, to be able to see that these are spread out pretty evenly across our community. And the reinvestment that we're seeing in our community is pretty, pretty even throughout. So just additional for, for review and for the community's review of what progress we're making as far as when they see and hear about development and building permits being issued. Any questions?
I like it, thank you.
Looks good. Good change.
Hey Caleb, I have a question. So is this a part, are the green dots representing the use of neighborhood revitalization funds? Or is it just neighborhood, just people doing that without that neighborhood revitalization?
That's right. We don't designate on this map. This is just the permits based on the categories that are in your chart. So the green is residential remodel permits. Blue is commercial industrial remodel. Yellow is single-family manufactured. Red is single-family residential modular new construction. And then the kind of the dark burgundy red color is miscellaneous permits. And those should match up with your, with the chart that you have in the, in your reports.
Is this manually created or is it automatically populated through GIS?
We work through GIS to import the information from our building permit software.
So you can take March, you know, March 1 to March 31, 2019 permits by category and boom, it shoots them up. Great, that's awesome.
And one thing we would like to do at the end of the year is we'll morph this map with our annual report at the end of the year to show it more like a heat map that shows where the investments actually are, the greater investments versus those that haven't. So it gives a good idea where we're seeing reinvestment in our communities.
So plethora of dots at the end of the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
But looks good, good job. Thank you.
I'd also like to have Public Works Director Sam Curran come up and give you an update on potholes and alleys. I know we rolled out the, you know, pothole watch system or whatever. I think we came up with a name, but, and that wasn't it. The ran into a bit of a delay and he's gonna give you an update on that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We've been a little frustrated. We haven't been able to get hot mix for a while. I'm pleased to tell you that we sent a truck to Scott City, or Scott County line to pick up our first load of hot mix. So we are now starting to patch holes permanently. So hopefully you'll see our dots changing, but we did start today. We did also start working alleys again today where it's a little bit drier. And so we do have a greater operator out there working. So hopefully you're gonna see some progress. I'm gonna work with GIS and create a map on the alleys as well, so you can see our progress as we work through the community on alleys as well. So, good news, but it's been kind of a delay, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
And one more thing under Managers' Report. Through yesterday's filing, there were seven folks interested in, or some folks that have put their name in the hat for the four seats that will be contested for the City Commission in November. The question we've got is, does that trigger a primary? No, it does not. It's three times the number of seats contested in the election is the, is the magic number for when a primary is required. So the only, the only ballot on which you'll find City Commission candidates will be the November 2019 ballot. I believe that's all for the Managers' Report. The meetings of note are listed there. I think we got a parade coming up, so I'm sure C. Lynn needs to, needs to know, or probably already does know. You took care of that probably a long time ago. Yeah, so if there aren't any questions on the meetings of note, we can move to 9A, which is the consideration of the appropriations ordinance. If approved, it would be 2484-2019A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2484-2019A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appropriation ordinance 2484-2009A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10A and 10B are both related to the keeping of regulated fowl. And I'm going to have staff come up, just to know that A and B are interrelated and it'll likely be the same staff report we'll give at once. And then you'll be in a position to consider A1.
Yes, so we have plenty of puns about the ordinances here, but the, what we have before you is a, is a amendment in regards to the keeping of fowl. Neighborhood and Development Services staff has been asked to review the regulations for a number of the permitted fowl within the city limits. The city added fowl to the regulations in 2011. And currently, the maximum number of fowl allowed in one is one fowl for every 500 square feet of lot size and not to exceed six square, six per lot. The memo will be on, or the memo will be one of the two memos that I'll review, which will, the second part of this is B, which is the Code of Ordinances Amendment. We'll address the keeping of the fowl themselves in more detail, based on the Code of Ordinances. Staff contacted and reached out to Orson Farm and Home and Tractor Supply Company in regards to the minimum number of fowl that must be purchased. We got those numbers from, from both of those companies. Those appear to be the retailers that we've heard that most go to. And so we asked them how many they sell. And so we did some background research on that. On average, the minimum square footage per chicken is about four to five square feet per chicken inside a coop. And on average, the minimum square foot per chicken outside the coop needed is approximately eight to 10 square feet. Since there are different types of chickens, the larger the chicken, the more space the chickens will need inside and outside of those, of those coops. Looking at the jurisdiction similar to Garden City, staff also contacted the City of Hutch and Salina in regards to the number of permitted fowl. Hutchison allows a maximum of 10 fowl per lot and Salina allows a maximum of 15 fowl per lot. Both Hutch and Salina have, have not had any problems or concerns with the number of fowl allowed per lot. Staff also spoke with Hutchison's animal control officers to see their experience, if any, with issues with the number of fowl permitted in that regard. Their animal control officer stated that they do not experience many of issues based on the number of fowl. The primary issue is similar to that of dogs and other domesticated animals getting out of the yard on occasion and escaping the yards. Both Salina and Hutch have the same regulation as Garden City does, that they do not allow roosters inside the city limits. And in the last two years, code compliance has had three violations for chickens and nine violations for roosters in city limits. Animal Control has had two violations for chickens and one being cited and one receiving a written warning. They have had several calls for chickens, however, they only resulted in verbal warning other than the two violations. And the residents took care of those concerns. There may be other concerns in keeping fowl. We did the research in regards to the disease and other things that fowl may carry, which is very similar to dogs and cats, if they're maintained properly and correctly, those are normally taken care of. After reviewing both Hutch and Salina's permitted fowl, staff is proposing the maximum number of permitted fowl per lot be increased to 12 per lot. However, Garden City Animal Control has a requirement for keeping of fowl and dogs. And that's where we would need to amend the Code of Ordinances in there as well to make sure that they both match. All fowl will be needed to be in a fenced area and be provided with food, shelter, and water. Staff noticed that the inconsistency between the zoning regulations and the Code of Ordinances. And we've worked with the Police Department and Animal Control in updating both regulations so that they are consistent. This went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended alternative number one, which is the governing body may approve the amendment as presented at the, their May 16, 2019 meeting unanimously with all six representatives of the Planning Commission present. And you have a copy of the ordinance enclosed, which makes the amendments. We did take out some of the items that you see as striking out. Those are now located in the next ordinance that you'll be regarding the fowl. So, any questions?
Have we had requests for this?
Yes, we have.
How many?
I, we've probably had three or four requests over the last, since we've adopted the regulations, so.
From me.
Well, and I really appreciated the work that the Planning Commission did in the discussion. And then you brought in, you know, local experts to help to manage that with the Southwest Kansas Extension Agent. I think that was a really, I think that was really helpful and that she added a lot to the discussion, so.
Yeah, they, we, we did contact the Extension Office. They're the experts on a lot of animal keeping. And they also suggest this is a great hobby for those kids that in our rural area that participate in 4H, that they can do inside city limits and still participate in those programs. And so, so, yeah, those are, when the, this originally came forward, when we started it in 2011, they were prohibited prior to, prior to 2011. And I believe that at that time, the Planning Commission's recommendation was to be very conservative with the six, because it was new. Actually, it's fairly new for a lot of communities, bringing chickens back into city limits. And so, and so other communities have adjusted their numbers as well as they've adjusted to the number of complaints and issues that they may or may not cause.
I really appreciated it. And I know, we all joke because everybody knows that I have chickens and I, but I, I think that it really reflects, actually, a lot of people have chickens. And what I appreciate about this ordinance is it's clear.
Right.
And you have responsibilities as an animal owner and your responsibilities to your neighbors. And it's really important that this is laid out and that people adhere to those. And so I appreciate the work that staff did. I think that the research is really helpful for people understanding. And I think it is, it's useful for kids and it is a, it's a good thing for, for everybody. And there's environmental aspects too. So I, it is becoming more of a accepted practice and a lot of communities are going through this. So I appreciate you updating our ordinance.
But now, this is 500 square feet of the lot size rounded down per animal?
Uh, one, one animal per 500 square feet of lot size rounded down, but not, in no event shall the total number of permitted fowl on any lot exceed 12.
12, yeah.
Which is the same language that was in the pre, in the existing, but it's just moving that number from six to 12.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's...
If your lot size accommodates it.
And that's why we did, there is a max, it's 12. So even though you may have a very large lot, it's...
Better buy a hundred-foot tank.
Oh, I've got the lot, Mayor Kate Cowsor.
I move that we approve the ordinances presented.
What's the number?
We move 2835-2019.
I move that we approve 2835-2018.
2019.
2019, sorry.
I'll second that one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the ordinance 2835-2019, which allows for 12, up to 12 chickens. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10B would be if approved, 2836-2019.
And this ordinance goes hand in hand with the other. This is to the Code of Ordinances. This is what our animal control officers will have to assist them when, when they receive a complaint on these and describes in more detail in regards to the coop requirements and the cleanliness, the environmental concerns, the taking care of maintenance of, of those.
I make the motion, we approve ordinance 2836-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2836-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks Caleb, to you and your staff for your work on both of those. Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, this would abate nuisance 506 North Third Street. It's resolution 2816-2019.
And this is your, your typical environmental nuisance in regards to plywood entertainment center cabinets, other miscellaneous items in the front.
It's not the Broncos' flag?
Again, contacted, no response from the individuals or resident there, okay. I'll make the motion, we approve resolution 2618-2019.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2816-2019 in reference to nuisance condition at 506 North Third. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10D, also an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 2817-2019 and would abate a nuisance identified at 2704 Rock Road.
This property at 2704 Rock Road, for this environmental nuisance includes accumulation of tires, industrial equipment, and construction materials located on the property.
I make the motion that we approve resolution 2817-2019.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2817, a nuisance, removal of a nuisance condition at 2704 Rock Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10E's of vehicle, motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 2818-2019 and abate a motor vehicle nuisance at 2704 Rock Road.
This is the same location as the environmental nuisance that you just looked at. This has a, 2704 Rock Road has a skid steer loader, Clark, located on the property that has flat tires and, and is, meets the requirements of the motor vehicle nuisance requirements.
I move that we approve resolution 2818-2019.
Second.
Is there, it's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2818-2019 at 2704 Rock Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item F, if approved, would be resolution 2819-2019, would remove a motor vehicle nuisance at 1101 East Kansas Plaza.
Yeah, this is a vehicle that has, the tags are expired and windows are broken out of the vehicle and is been located here for quite some time.
Yeah, I, I'll probably abstain since we own the building, but that, you know, it's kind of bad if you rent, rent this to somebody and they put the vehicle out there and then it becomes our problem. And I don't know exactly how to, in fact, I turned it in, but... I didn't realize I was gonna be the one that...
So did you receive the letter then?
You got the letter, yeah.
Okay. So...
So what did you do about it?
What have you done about it?
Yeah, well, I contacted the person.
Good thing you're abstaining there, that's probably why.
Yeah, I don't think I want to vote on this. Take over.
So, so again, we have that, we have the... So you haven't gotten any contact back from that individual?
Not until now.
Not until now. It's a public contact, I think.
Unfortunately, oftentimes, this is the case where, whether it's in a landlord situation on a, in a residential area or other locations where they, it's the, it may be the tenant's vehicle, but when we leave the door hangers and the, and the notices on the door for the tenants, they don't, they don't take care of the issue. Then we, it goes to the property owner.
Because I was surprised that it wouldn't go to the owner of the tag, so that's, that's where they...
Yeah, the, the way the ordinance is, is it goes to the property, because the property owner is ultimately responsible for the property use. And so, and if they're leasing it out, unfortunately, that's the, the bad part is that, is if their tenant isn't taking care of it, their responsibility is to take care of that with their tag.
Well, I'm gonna move that. There's nothing different than any other municipality. It's just too difficult to hold the, the owner of the personal property liable or track them down or attach a lien to a motor vehicle. So we place the responsibility on the property owner.
Well, I move that we approve resolution 2819-2019. I'd move, sorry.
Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I move, yes, I move, we approve resolution 2819-2019.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
All right.
You're out of hock.
Just hand me that, would you, and save the... I'll get Tom Marfer to get on this. He's needing a vehicle.
Item 11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve acceptance of an inclusive playground equipment grant of $30,000. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. So in April, we came to you asking for permission to apply for the grant. And yesterday at 1:30, I received an email that says we've been awarded the grant and I need to tell them by tomorrow if we accept the grant. And so what's before you is, is a one-to-one matching grant. And the finances will come out of liquor tax funds that we have on our side of the $30,000 and whatever labor and other small expenses that may go into it, we can cover it within the budget. And so what's before you is to, we're asking, staff is asking that you would approve acceptance of this grant from the NRPA and Disney for the playground, for ADA and accessibility in that way.
What'd you say it goes?
It goes in, at Harold Long Park. We'll just attach it somewhere close to what's there. It'll be, it'll be a small footprint. $60,000 on something like this doesn't go very far. But it's a good start for us to get moving in that direction, so.
And Andy Livwell-Finney County was involved in the application, is that correct?
Yes, Livwell-Finney County has helped us in the application process, so.
Very good.
I make the motion, we approve the acceptance of the inclusive playground equipment grant of $30,000.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the inclusive playground equipment grant, $30,000 for Harold Long Park. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a memorandum of understanding between Kansas State University and the City of Garden City. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What's before you today is a MOU, a memo of understanding between Kansas State University, KSU, who's been interested in having the city extend a 12-inch water main along East Mary Avenue to their facilities located at 4500 East Mary Street. The current water that they use for potable water is, the quality is very poor. They actually contacted the city back in 2016 about the possibility of doing this. At that time, what we did is we worked with, because Chapel Heights was being developed, so the... so the water main was extended into Chapel Heights, which made this a little bit closer. And what the, so they're interested in that. The city is interested in obtaining an easement for future utilities around a portion of their property, as well as a piece of property in the corner that could be utilized, it's on the high ground of their property, south of Mary Street, could be used for a future water tower when that time comes. That's been, that site was identified as an area that could be utilized by, when we did the Water Master Plan. The MOU outlines in the agreement that the city will extend the water facilities to KSU property at the city's expense. KSU will grant the city the required easements for utilities and be supportive of the city acquiring real property from KSU for the water storage tower when that time comes. KSU agrees to sign a pre-annexation agreement and will pay the published water rate for service inside the city. In addition, the city agrees to pass an ordinance when KSU, when the KSU property is annexed into the city stating that there are some instances where applicable case law of the state of Kansas would prohibit the applicability of city ordinances to KSU real property. That ordinance is attached to the MOU for reference. You're not approving the ordinance. If you approve this, you're just approving the MOU and that ordinance would be background material so that if and when KSU decides to annex the property or the city chooses to move forward and have it annexed, that ordinance would come in front of you for approval at that time. The city does not intend to restrict or prohibit KSU's ability to function its mission, including the use of real property unless there is a clear and overriding public interest which requires applicability of city ordinances to KSU's real property unless there is a clear legal ability on the part of the city to do so. So, the MOU in front of you, you can either prove it as presented between KSU and the City of Garden City or do not approve the MOU. The cost for KSU's portion of that 12-inch main would have been $89,958. The city was already going to pay to oversize that water main like we do on almost every project in the amount of $265,140. So, the total cost would be $355,098. And this expenditure will come from our bond account that the commission authorized us to do last year. It currently has a balance of $3,628, $357. Certainly answer any questions you may have?
Mike?
Yes.
What, where's the 300 by 300-foot parcel you're talking about?
It's right in the corner.
Yeah.
Which corner?
You can be able to reach it even with that. I can reach it if you keep it low. The easement will be along this corridor and this corridor and the water tower location would be right there.
Oh, okay.
It's in one of the exhibits attached to the MOU.
Okay, I didn't see.
I guess, I'm all in favor of getting them good water. Absolutely, and taking them as a customer to our utility, that'd be wonderful. I am, I have a little bit of question about this ordinance because it is pretty, it's, there will, you will not adhere to the restrictions otherwise imposed on the rest of folks who are annexed within the city and I recognize that they do specific functions out at the KSU station with regard to agricultural processes and things. I just, this seems very open-ended to me to have this included in our MOU without maybe some more specificity. I did have some concerns about it.
There's a lot of specificity in it and it's, it's nothing we would otherwise do, but KSU entered into an MOU with the City of Manhattan years ago when Kansas State was expanding, wanting to go into annexed areas. The issue, Commissioner, is that KSU's property is state-owned property and there are some state statutes that are specifically applicable to state-owned property as opposed to municipal ordinances being applicable. And there's some case law that's kind of up and down as to whether or not a municipality can apply its ordinances to state property or whether state law preamps municipal ordinances. I think it's probably in the area of state building codes that are applicable to buildings in Topeka, for example, versus our building codes that might be applicable to property on Kansas State's property here. KSU simply wants to, to establish that if there is a conflict and they can show an overriding reason why state law should apply, that we wouldn't contest that and we would allow them to follow state law as opposed to municipal ordinance. It has no applicability with respect to the UPOC or the standard traffic ordinance or any of our municipal laws. The nuisance ordinances or code sections would apply, there's no state law there. So, it's a really limited area where we might have a conflict and we've just agreed that we'll tell you when we're going to annex and then we're going to pass this ordinance, but you're going to have 60 days to kind of look at, look at it and if there's any conflict, we'll talk about it. And then if we would have an ordinance that would conflict with state law, we would talk to them about it.
So, am I understanding then we do not get the property for the water tower that has to be done later on or we have to agree to buy or purchase it later on? Is that kind of locking that in?
We've, we've asked to purchase the property and it's a pretty, it's a pretty complex process. KSU is on board with selling it to us, but it has to go through the Kansas Legislature and I think the Kansas State Board of Regents. And there's no reason to believe that they wouldn't be on board as well, but it's a process that KSU cannot today say, yes, we will do that. But they have said, if we can get these authorizations, we will sell it to you at an appraised value. And there's a process, you have to go through a state property to appraise it to establish a fair market value. So, we approached in the, in an effort to buy the property, but they're not there yet. So, we're getting a temporary easement and if at some point we cannot purchase it, then we'll get permanent easement.
Mike?
Yes.
I think it's interesting where the extension is, is owned by the Finney County. Why is that?
The, if that's correct, Mayor.
Yeah, that, all the, all the buildings.
These are the two properties that will sign the pre-annexation agreement. It's owned by KSU. This property is owned by Finney County and it actually extends up to there. The reason we put that on there is this is the property that's actually, our meter will be in Mary Street, that's the property that's going to take the water. We didn't, we didn't want to not show that and have you think that the water was going to go along those two for irrigation. It's strictly for this property for their potable needs.
But we're not seeking to annex the county's property, nor do we need any easements at this point, but if in the future we do for construction or something, we'll get those from Finney County.
I just always assumed that Kate, that was KSU's property, but it isn't.
No, sir.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve memorandum of understanding between KSU and the City of Garden City.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the MOU between KSU and City of Garden City. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Item B is...
Did you have something else, Mike, or?
No, actually, I was just going to say I wanted to thank Randy because it has been a very difficult process of working through the legal stuff to get this to this point. He's done a really good job, so.
Thanks.
He said he...
Don't you see that?
I sounded convinced when he said this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
Item B, the governing body has asked to consider the distribution of the Downtown Development Fund for 120 East Chestnut Street. Caleb? Nope, Melissa?
I'll present, then Caleb, need an assist over here. Mayor and Commissioners, I bring before you our second request of 2019 for distribution of downtown development funds. Ms. Debbie Warden of Warden's Limited LLC has submitted an application for the Downtown Development Fund for the renovation of the commercial space at 120 East Chestnut Street. This is a former retail space that was vacant and is now being converted into meeting and office spaces for a place of worship. The total cost of the renovation and professional fees submitted by the applicant is estimated to be $282,780. And in review of those fees submitted, the only applicable reimbursable items include the construction costs, electrical work, heat and air conditioning, plumbing, suspended ceiling, roofing, and professional fees, which those items total $252,282.26. So, that is the amount that we used to determine the reimbursement award for her project. The applicant has submitted all the required information and the application's middle package is available for your review as well. As I've stated, this is the second application we received for 2019. Currently, the balance of the Downtown Development Fund is $105,142. Using the scoring matrix, the project scored a total of 19 points. Points were awarded to this project for filling a vacant building, remodeling a complete building, and providing the potential to draw people into the downtown from surrounding areas. While this building is an older building, it is not a local, state, or nationally registered historic building. The renovation of the space will not preserve in a historical manner the interior of the building, so no points were rewarded for its historical nature. A reimbursement level of 30% is recommended. This project is in compliance with the Downtown Master Plan and the Garden City zoning regulations. The alternatives before the governing body are, the governing body may fund the award at $75,684, that is the 30% of the $252,000 amount. The governing body may fund the award at a different amount. The governing body may deny the award of the Downtown Development Fund. Staff recommends alternative number one. If this application is awarded at the scored amount, the Downtown Development Fund would be reduced to $29,458.24 for the remainder of 2019.
Yeah, I just want to note that the mayor is stepping down, so.
Okay.
Discussion. So, I really appreciate, I couldn't remember how the Downtown Development Fund worked. I didn't know if it was, and so Matt provided a really great explanation. I wish, I wish you could have shared it. I don't want to be shared with everyone, but that these funds, once they're gone, unless we reallocate that they're gone. It was, I couldn't remember as revolving fund or how that worked.
Correct. For the last two years, we've only funded this project with the remainder balances left over from the previous years. So, that was for 2018 and 2019. It hasn't been fully funded since 2017.
For the public's benefit, the first, it's 2015, I believe, was the first version of this, this development tool, which was an experiment by that commission to see to what degree cash, a cash tool with less restrictions might stimulate reinvestment in the downtown. We had, the commission had a source of money available to them based on the way we were budgeting the new retail increment post-December 2014. So, new retail sales created within the Starbond District and after 2000, after December 2014, on an annual basis, were being diverted away from the general fund to a separate fund to sit and the commission could decide what they wanted to do with it. But the idea was from a budgeting standpoint, the commission didn't want the, the general fund of the city to get used to those revenues if two or three years down the road, they would begin being diverted to a Starbond project, which is now the case. So, they decided the first amount to underwrite this, the use of this new experimental tool would be $250,000. The first $250,000 went in less than a year, less than a calendar year. It was early 2016. The commission had another year's worth of distribution that was diverted over into that fund and decided, hey, let's do that again. We liked what we saw, put another $250,000 in. That took about a year to disperse, a little over, and then the commission then awarded, or then backfilled again another $250,000, 2017. That was also the first time that a scoring system was, was used and for, and that's the same $250,000 from which, if approved, some, some award for this project would come. And, you know, the commission will need to then decide at the point that these funds are expired, whether or not you wish to underwrite the use of that tool again or in some smaller or larger amount, but it doesn't automatically renew as part of the budgetary process.
Thank you for the explanation.
I'd make a motion that we fund the award at $75,684, the 30%, as recommended by staff and is scored by the matrix.
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second.
You got a question?
No. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being in Garden City.
Did you get that car moved while you were going? Item 12C, the governing body has asked to consider and appoint two members to fill the vacant seats on the Cultural Relations Board. Ally?
Mayor and Commissioners, the Cultural Relations Board has two board positions that are expiring with December of 2019 and they have recommended to appoint Dek Aden and Vanessa Gatan to those expiring positions.
I make a motion that we approve the Community Relations Board recommendations to those two vacant positions.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we fill the two members to the vacant seats of the Cultural Relations Board as recommended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Great job about getting applicants. That was very impressive applicants.
Item D, President of Finney County Economic Development Corporation, Lana DeVall, will be present to review the second quarter report for 2019 with the governing body.
Good afternoon.
Lana?
Sorry, Matt.
No, that's okay.
Good afternoon. I'll slow down. All right, you should have had in your packet a copy of our second quarter quarterly report. And just a reminder at the top of that, we always include that our meetings are open to the public. They are held the fourth Wednesday of each month at 7:30 right here in your chambers. They are also televised and they get watched more than you can imagine. We are always surprised by the number of people who watch and reach out to us afterwards based on information that they gathered there, so we appreciate the space, we appreciate Selen always making sure that it's available for us, and we appreciate that there's always an IT person here to keep us straight. So, thank you for that. Prospect updates, we tried to just include a few of the things that we're working on so you have some idea of that. I go over these each month at our monthly meeting and go into more detail as far as where we are with the prospect, but this list just kind of gives you an idea of some of the things that we've done. As you can see, the Department of Commerce has sent out several, several RFPs and RFIs that our community would be able to buy for, and so we only respond to those if there's a good reason for it for our community. We're pretty particular, as you all know, in the types of development that we want, so we try to really weigh whether or not they make sense for our community and certainly utility usage is a big part of that. If they're going to be a huge water user, they're probably not the best fit for our community unless we can find a good opportunity to create a reuse situation with them. Any question on the prospect updates?
Lana, when you list like 418, 1218, 118, that's, that's a contact that will come to you sometimes to us or Finney County saying you've got, you know, this general, very general description of an industry or their, their needs, please respond with any...
In 48 hours.
Sites within 48 hours. So, it's kind of the, and Finney County Economic Development Corporation does a good job of getting with everybody and submitting a site that fits the description, but when you have one site submitted, three sites submitted, two sites submitted, that may be any, I mean, that's not just city, that's anywhere in Finney County.
That's any jurisdiction.
Sometimes maybe outside of Finney County. I mean, you do, we're beyond the city limits.
Right, right. The only sites that we would compile the information for would be specifically for Finney County, so they would either be within the county, within one of the incorporated cities within it. We're very fortunate that we have quick response from our team, so as you know, Matt very well, Matt, I reach out immediately to Caleb, to Mike, Sam, if it's necessary, and say, hey, here's what we're working on, I need your responses back rapidly. Fortunately, everybody in those positions knows those requirements very well, so those responses come back to us very quickly. Most communities aren't that fortunate and aren't able to respond within the very short timeframes that we get to respond to these. So, we are very careful. So we are very careful, again, we're, we're very choosy about which ones we respond to. If you wanted to spend all of your time chasing these, you could. We choose not to do that. We choose to be selective about the ones that, that we respond to and make sure that they're one that really would fit in our community.
Is there a reason why they give you such a short response time? Is it just, or is it just because that's the way the nature of the business or...
I would assume that's how we've always done it, but I don't know that, Troy. I, I really, I mean, they don't, they don't tell us a lot about that.
Seems really short.
From the Department of Commerce standpoint, their explanation to us is that that's what the site consultants give them, is a rapid turnaround. I know that they, you know, the Department of Commerce staff tries to take some time to review all of those submissions for complete submissions before they return them, so I suppose they probably cut off a couple of days from whatever the site selector has given them. But yeah, yeah. And again, I think you guys are all familiar with that, but those codings, as, as Matt mentioned, so 319, for instance, 3 is the month that we receive it in, and the 19 obviously is the year that we really start working with that prospect.
You come up with all these names?
And, you know, our guy for the code names was Steve Kautrell. And so fortunately, I've still got him textable, so I just text him now when I need a project name. We don't typically identify them with a prospect name, which as you are well aware of, are usually small towns throughout the country and that we use for that, mid-sized cities, as Kautrell would, would tell us. So we don't typically assign that to them unless it's reached the point of we're having discussions surrounding it. For instance, we're having meetings related to that project. It really just kind of gives us that opportunity to, to call it by that name, and, and people get pretty familiar with that pretty rapidly so that we still can talk about it, but obviously not give away the company name that we're working with.
Yeah, I've, I've been, attended the meetings. I, I really appreciate the prepack that you send out for the meetings. That's really helpful to kind of review, and it's worth it seeing Tom Walker up early on those weeks, so, and he's always really cheerful, so...
He is. He's a pretty good board chairman. He kind of knows how to run a meeting. He might have done it a time or 12. Yeah, we appreciate that. So on project updates, which we consider separate from that, once you're aware of them, they become projects instead of prospects. And also, anytime that we're working on really community development initiatives, those will typically be called a project update versus a prospect update. So they, or Child Care and Early Learning Network, we have had a lot of traction, gotten a lot of traction on this over the last couple of months. We're very excited about it, and I'll talk a little bit later in the report about some contract services that we're doing related to the Child Care and Early Learning Network. But right now, FCEDC is, is negotiating to secure a building that we feel would be ideal for our first center and also would house the executive offices for the network, so we'll keep you posted on that. Pinky's Grilled Chistro, and we are working with them on the procurement of a permanent space. Unfortunately, the location that they really wanted in downtown Garden City isn't going to work because they weren't able to apply for downtown development funds that would have been necessary to get it renovated over to a restaurant. But we have found them a location, and they're working with Great Plains out of Dodge City to secure all their financing. Most likely, we'll end up doing an eCommunity loan for them, which eCommunity is one of the programs that we offer through Finney County Economic Development, but Great Plains does all of the administration of that loan program. And we've also assisted a buyer with the purchase of the Finney County Corrections Building over here on Eighth Street. The county did not want that building any longer. They didn't have a use for it, and we were able to find a gal who could use it, so we're helping her and working with her bank to get all the documentation in order so that she can close on that property. The county's already approved the sale of that building. Starbond Project, you guys have all probably got to see those updates. It's pretty cool. The Leadership Kansas group had a lot of positive things to say about it when they got to see it last week as well. Transload Facility, we continue to see growth out there. We have, we have submitted two sites within the Transload Facility to some industrial projects, and they're considering those. If they're heavy rail users or storage users, obviously the Transload makes good sense for them, so we're happy to work with the owners of the Transloading Garden City Industrial Park in order to find homes for those companies. And we also have tentative approval from BNSF for containers, which is the big export container that you see, and that's a really big deal, mostly for supply chain management for our existing businesses. DFA would do, would increase their efficiencies a lot if we were able to get containers here because they could actually package their product for export here, put it on the train instead of having to truck it to Kansas City, which they're currently having to do. And then we've been working with a real estate owner in the downtown district on a variety of development projects, and we have a few businesses that are interested in leasing spaces from them and doing renovations, so we're very excited to be working with them to help them identify some really positive uses for their vacant buildings. Any questions on any of that?
I always ask about the Child Care Network, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the work that you've done and excited about it. Do you have any kind of closing date on a building, tentative?
We're negotiating the purchase of the building right now. So we do have all of the construction estimates in for that particular location, and the, the very good news is that once we can secure the building, the construction will, will be pretty rapid. They don't anticipate that it will take a significant amount of time to get the renovations done, and it actually was more affordable than what we probably anticipated it would be, so we're excited about that as well.
Great. Thank you for your work on that.
Sorry, I don't know when it'll open yet, but...
I know.
We're trying.
But maybe within the, a year? You say 12-month period, maybe?
Well, we would like to think so.
Great.
Certainly, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, based on the other, the other traction that we're getting, like I said, we're getting this, this proposal and the way that we've designed this really is getting statewide attention. So I've spent quite a bit of time on the phone with a variety of state agencies related to the program, as well as Senator Moran's office and Congressman Marshall's office. So it's exciting to see that people recognize that, number one, it's a problem, and it's not just a problem here, it really is a problem everywhere, but also that instead of just complaining, we went out and found a solution that we really believe is replicable through our communities so long as they can bring the right stakeholders to the table. So, thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. Initiatives, right now, we're working with Bob Kreitzer, who is on our board, serves as the vice chairman of our board, was appointed to the Governor's Council on Education this year, and it's a small but mighty task force. His particular committee, they, there are, I believe, 40 of them on, on the council, and they've divided that down into committee work. And Bob's particular community, our committee is designed to make sure that we're aligning our education system with our workforce needs in the state of Kansas. So they've given them a very broad slate and said, just come back to us with all the ideas you've come up with to help us make sure that we're aligning what we're teaching our students with opportunities that exist in their own communities, or at least within the state. So it's been a very exciting opportunity for us. We've been able to get the school district in Holcomb, as well as Garden City School District and Garden City Community College together, and really talk through what can they do to better streamline their programming, number one, but how do we ensure that what they're teaching is really going to be valuable to our employer set? So we have a follow-up, another follow-up meeting with just the education piece this week, and then we're hopeful that we'll be in a position where we can really open that up to the employers and get them in the room to say, this works, this doesn't work, this is important, but maybe this isn't as important, that type of thing. One of the things that we continue to hear, and I'm sure you all have heard this too, is what they used to call soft skills, and I suppose they still do call them soft skills. I don't think that's a good name for them. I think they're essential skills. I think you have to know how to communicate in the workplace. I think you have to know how to problem solve. So that's one of the things that we're working on with our education piece is, how do we make sure that we're incorporating those essential skills from the earliest ages possible? So in kindergarten, they can be learning personal responsibility, and they can be learning communications and all of those things. So we want to ensure that we're putting, it's not, we're not just waiting until they get to the high school and then say, oh my gosh, we got to get them ready for a career or get them ready for college. We need to be thinking really about the entire spectrum of the system, and obviously, we're in a good position because we can even consider that down at the early childhood level and really start incorporating that in to curriculum really countywide for our young people. So we're excited about that. And the Makerspace Board of Directors is currently working with Garden City Community College to create some of the enrichment programming. The community college used to do a lot of enrichment classes, you know, cake baking and stained glass and that type of stuff. The Makerspace is working with them now, and will be able to offer that programming. Right now, the community college has made space available to the Makerspace, so they can actually use the community college campus to provide some of that programming. So we're hopeful that we can get folks excited, number one, about the Makerspace offerings and really kind of introduce it better to the community so that once we're able to find a permanent home for them, folks will know what it is that they're, that they're joining up for, if you will. Excuse me. Housing development, we've been working with a lot of our local builders on housing opportunities as well as out-of-area developers. When it comes to the large-scale stuff, a lot of times that's going to rely on somebody who can come in with a larger crew and, and be able to, to meet timelines and so forth. So we've been actually very excited about a lot of the feedback that we've gotten. I think as much as anything, we really like it when our local builders are coming to us and saying, hey, we want to be a part of this. We, you know, we can build thousand-square-foot houses if that's what we have to do to meet, you know, a certain price point or whatever, so we're excited about that. We're helping them with layouts, helping them identify properties that may work better for the type of development that they're doing. And we're also taking some time to kind of be creative and think outside the box and kind of pre-plan some developments, especially some smaller developments in areas that maybe aren't real usable for much of large housing-type stuff, but could maybe meet some of our short-term needs. So we've, we've gone and, and kind of identified some of those areas and actually laid them out in ways that kind of make sense, and we're able then to go through that with a builder and tell him, you know, here's, here's what your cost would probably be on something like this, here's what you could probably rent these for or sell these for, that type of thing. So we try to do a lot of that to, to help them be more creative, if you will. And then in contract services, I just want to mention Wichita County Economic Development actually came to us and asked about our child care discussions and, and really just kind of wanted to pick our brains on what we were doing to fix ours, and they have contracted with us now to provide a child care need study for Wichita County, so we'll be doing that. And we also had a large employer who, after seeing our presentation, asked us to provide a strategic plan for their company to provide for child care needs, hopefully throughout the country at all of their plant sites, but certainly for the Finney County plant site. So we're very excited about that. Anything I can answer on any of that?
I was interested in that sustainable, and I didn't know if, that sustainable agricultural project? Like, if you mentioned that, I didn't.
I haven't. I didn't mention it today. We, we've been working on it now for about two years. So it actually came to us, a couple of ag producers, not Finney County ag producers, actually counties over, came and said, you got to fix ag because it's broken, and we know our kids don't have a reason to come home, and we, you know, we're having a hard time with commodity agriculture and being able to control our future, if you will. And so they basically just charged us with just come up with an idea, tell us what we should be doing, and then tell us what that is, and we'll do it. We'll figure it out. So I, I've actually traveled with this group of farmers. We flew up last fall, flew up to the, the upper Midwest and looked at some opportunities up there of things that they may be able to replicate here. One of those ag producers is actually moving into consumer-ready products, which is the direction we led them. We said if you, if you want to maximize our natural resources, you have to take the commodity out of it. You really have to be preparing an item that's ready for the consumer, and you need to own it from the seed to the packaging so it's ready to go to the customer, and that's what they're working on with us now. So we're seeing some progress with that. This winter, one of those gentlemen actually invited over about 20 of his neighbors and had me come out at 6 o'clock one morning to visit with them about how they too could get involved and get engaged in doing that. So we'll continue to work with them on that. One of these projects is in Haskell County, and they have asked for our assistance in designing a tax abatement policy for their county so that they can assist him with his actual production facility that's on site.
I know New Life up in Scott City did that, and they really, they have a lot of products for people who have gluten issues, and it's been a real successful, I mean, it took five years to get them to kick off, but I mean, it has been, now it's very successful worldwide out of, you know, a small county like Scott.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's definitely a challenge, and it definitely requires a paradigm shift among our ag producers, and most of them have grown up farming commodities, and, and that's just pretty much the way we've worked. But getting them to think about actually creating consumer-ready products is, is starting to make sense with a lot of them, so we're excited about it, and it creates some pretty substantial water savings if we do it right.
What about hemp? Are they, is there any farmers?
Yeah, so the hemp legislation requires that they submit a permit to allow them to grow. They received over 200 permits this year. Representative Stephen Johnson from Osaria kind of led that committee, if you will, and they assigned folks from across the state, largely from the ag regions, to review those applications. They were blind applications, so when the committee saw them, they didn't have a name, a farm, nothing on them. They were just looking at it to see, was this person capable of doing it? Did they have any criminal background that might lead them to grow something besides the approved product, so forth? Unfortunately, I've stayed very involved in that process with that committee, and most of the permits that they received were asking for permission to grow for CBD oil. And we think that's, that's probably very short-sighted for a lot of reasons. Number one, they're now lab-creating CBD oil, so it won't be long, and you won't rely on a crop to make it, if you will, to be able to produce the CBD oil. We really feel like the strongest opportunity for us and for our region is probably going to be the fibrous hemp that will allow us to replace plastics, paper boards, cardboards, paper, any of those items. We package a lot of food in our region, and so if we can, if we can make that transition and grow the hemp for the purposes of creating packaging, we could actually create a pretty nice opportunity for ourselves. Again, I've cautioned our ag producers, and, and when I testified in legislature on industrial hemp, I made it clear that we don't need just another commodity. We really need to be focused on, if we're going to grow something new in our state, we need to have the production capacity right here in our state, so when it leaves here, it is a finished product ready for consumption or use, whatever that may be.
Thank you. Very good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before we go into budget discussions, could we take a quick break?
Sure.
2:15? 2:15, sounds good.
2:15.
Recede us?
Recede.
Recess.
And...
Everybody's back. Get the agenda back up and running here.
Thank you for suggesting that.
Mayor and Commissioners, we're ready for the time on the agenda that we had set aside for going over the budget. I'm going to invite Melinda up here to walk you through the first set of taxing funds and the support funds that assist those taxing funds. And Melinda's going to take my seat.
Okay, so the very first fund that we're going to look at today is the Recreation Commission Employee Benefits Fund. This is a fund that we created last year during budget to account for the employee benefits for the Recreation Commission employees. It is limited to one and a half mils. If we calculate this out, the one and a half mils is in the expenses for 2020, that's $332,600. In 2020, that was the first year that the motor vehicle taxes could be allocated to them also, so they're getting a portion of that based on their mill levy. We always balance out this fund at the end of the year to zero. So, this year, we have $309,000 that's budgeted to go to the Recreation Commission. And in 2020, with the motor vehicle taxes and the Ad Valorem, we have $332,600. Fund 25 is the Recreation Commission Operating Fund. For this fund, we budget five mils of property tax. And then with that, they get the motor vehicle taxes that's allocated based on the allocation that we have for the whole city. This year, we'll be remitting to the Recreation Commission $1,17600. And then in 2020, we'll be remitting to them $1,225,712 based on five mils of property tax. Is there any questions that you would have for Aaron Stewart as far as the Recreation Commission programs that you would like to address at this time?
Well, I just wanted to ask about the budget for your employee benefits. How is that working? I know that it's a year under your belt, is that correct? Or is this the first?
This is the first year for that fund. It's working very well. We anticipate that we probably won't submit for the full one and a half mils, it'll be closer to about 1.4 mils.
That'll be nice, yeah.
So, we recognize that we can go up that high, but again, we're trying to monitor that fund. It's only used for employee benefits. So, I think Melinda could probably speak to this more than I can, but it's alleviated that burden on the city and it allows us to have that security in making sure that we can provide the benefits that we'd like to, to our employees.
So, you're talking about, can you tell me the benefits? I should know this.
It's health insurance, workers' comp insurance, payroll taxes, capers retirement, so those kind of, social security, Medicare, those are the items that can come out of there.
Why is that $9,019 and you're only going to use, that's on the commercial vehicle tax? And you're only, and then 2020, it's 18, 19. What's, why's that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Commercial vehicle tax.
Because they break it out.
It's an allocation that's done with Fannie County on that, on that, on those taxes.
Yeah, but why is so much difference?
Because when we go into the second year, they get a smaller portion of it.
Oh, I see.
So...
With the opening of the new building, probably 2020 beyond, how many additional employees or do you expect to add additional employees or you're just going to kind of reconfigure current employment numbers?
My guess is that we'll have to add additional employees, but those will be part-time employees. So, the, you know, it's not, it's not as big a cost as, say, a full-time.
And adding benefits and all of that.
Yeah, especially when you're, even when you're looking at payroll taxes. I mean, there's an increment increase, but it's, we're not talking about going from five employees to like 35 employees working several hours. The hours are still going to be part-time hours, evening hours, weekends. We do have expanded programming, but that shouldn't be a, it's, we anticipate that and it won't be a problem to kind of cover those payroll taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, Fund 40 is the Bond and Interest Fund. Last year, when we were working on this fund, we funded several projects. We funded H Street, we funded Southeast Community Park, and we funded one other project. But we held off on the cemetery irrigation last year. We decided we wanted to get more information on it, and if we decided that we wanted to do it, that we would have it be a bonded project for 2020. Andy and Sam, they've been working very hard on that irrigation project. They've also been working with the Electric and Water Department. And we feel like there needs to be a well to go along with that project. That would be roughly $200,000. Last year, we talked to you about a project that would be about 1.2. We have provided in this budget for a project at 1.4. That way, the irrigation project would come off of the city water supply, have its own well, and be able to operate up there. I think Andy's here and would probably like to talk to you a little bit about that.
Yeah, to give you more details on the well, Fred approached me a while back about this, and the current points of connection on Third Street in Bellevue, we would still use, which is still on the municipal water system, but we would take off approximately 10 to 12 million gallons a year by putting the well in, and we would put that up on the northwest corner by the shop area. And then as we expand the cemetery, this well wouldn't be able to handle everything that we would expand in the next 60 to 80 years, but it would handle the next, I want to say, 20 years of development. And with that, if we're estimating at 12 million gallons, taking that off of the city water supply, Fred says that's for about 192 people per year.
So, the cost efficiency, you're, by doing well, you're saving costs in water or you're saving, where's the cost savings?
Well, Fred could better answer the question on the cost savings. From the perspective that I understand that we're coming to you is, one of the commission goals is to take water off the city water system if we can do that for certain areas in landscaping or whatever goals you guys have identified or areas you have identified. And this is one area that we've looked at, and those are the metrics on it. So, as far as what kind of money it will save, Fred or Mike can answer that question better than I could, and Fred's out of town today, so I don't have those numbers.
Don't we take potable water?
Right, right.
Yeah, because it'd be non-treated, so that'd be, yeah.
Too bad we don't have the water.
So, to go back to the numbers, we carried over $309,390 into 2019. We do have a passenger facility charge allocation that comes into the Bond and Interest Fund due to debt issued for the airport. It will be going away in June of 2020, so we will have to reapply. But this year, we're, we project to be receiving $102,000 and then next year, $34,000. We also have Ad Valorem tax and motor vehicle taxes coming in. Special assessment taxes are really low anymore because we have all the RHID projects, which alleviated any special assessment projects to be going on. And then the reimbursed county, there is no reimbursement after 2018. That $25,000 was a 10-year payment from Fannie County to Garden City for the animal shelter, and that debt was paid off in 2018. The expenses, the interest and principal in 2019 totaled $2,109,711. That's right on your schedule. When you go over to 2020, that's going to be the debt that's currently in place plus the 1.4 million, and you have that scheduled right here in back for the cemetery irrigation project. That's the only project currently being looked at for 2020. You may have something come up in the next week or so that we may have to make some adjustments to this fund, but we can, we have plenty of time to do that.
So, are you preparing us for something?
Well, I don't know, if there's some projects that you think you might want to do next year.
Okay.
We're still open.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't final yet. The next fund is Health Insurance, number 55. We carried over $748,286 coming into 2019. We do still have retirees on the health insurance. The transfers from city departments is $820 per employee per month. The employee contributions are staying the same both in 2019 and 2020. We don't see any need for an increase there. So, we have total revenues coming into 2019 of $4,315,000 and then $4,300,000 in 2020. The expenses, as we go down those, we have the administrative and life insurance fees. We have the health insurance premium. I'll have Ally talk about that here in a minute. We'll just go ahead and get through these numbers. We have $3,005,000 in 2019 and $3,750,000 in 2020. We also fund our Grow Well Clinic out of here, $495,000 this year, $500 next year along with the operating expenses. We expect to carry over $1,2,600 into 2020. We're budgeting the full fund, so we have a budget of $5,302,600 in 2020 with a projected cash carryover of $9,95,400. And Ally, if you'd like to talk a little bit about how Blue Cross Blue Shield is looking?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioners, with our Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have not received our early renewal at this time. We've only had, seen 11 months of claims. We need that 12-month of claims in order for them to give us that early renewal. But when we're looking at those 11 months, it seems to be that we're on track, we're keeping our claims underneath the premium. So, again, look in good shape, but of course, we've got another month of claims that we still have to look at.
So, what you're saying is we will get a, chances are we will get a rebate?
Of course, yeah. Again, when we started, our reserve funds were at that maximum amount, and so as long as we can continue to keep for this last month our claims underneath those premiums paid out, then we should see that. Again, there's no guarantees on that refund amount.
And I appreciate that you expanded, I mean, the clinic expanded hours also, and I think there's some really neat things that they are doing. I mean, I, last year when we had a pre-meeting with them, I, it really drove home that this is one of the reasons why employees, the health benefits are really paying off. And so, I think that's making sure that we keep on top of that.
And they picked up another company.
Oh, did they?
Isn't it Kenny Green? I can't think of the name.
Mid-American Millway?
Mid, yeah, Mid-American. They also use it.
And so, what you'll see on that, the clinic costs, we did increase those clinic costs just slightly to account for a couple of programs that we're offering for employees, so the tobacco cessation program and then looking at our weight loss program. So, some of those programs we have picked up, which does increase that cost just a bit. But we want to make sure that those programs are available for our employees at no cost to the employee.
Thank you.
The next fund is Fund 56, Health Insurance Reserve. We carried over into 2019, $2,116,36. We're showing the refund that we got from Blue Cross Blue Shield and revenue here in 2019 of $105,675. We show no expenses in 2019. In 2020, we're carrying over $2,117,312. We would like to get this reserve fund around 2.5. And then in the case, if we do have a huge health insurance increase, we wouldn't have to let the employees take the brunt of it. I mean, this fund can be used to offset any sort of huge increase. So, it's nice to have that reserve fund there. Moody's really likes that reserve also, so. Thanks, Ally. Okay, then we have Airport, Fund Number 60. This fund carried over $1,691,683 into 2019, but I want to tell you right off the bat, $1 million of that is Kansas Affordable Airfare Program money that we're holding for a project that hopefully can happen in the near future. The airport... The, the airport does receive property tax funds and motor vehicle funds, and then they operate themselves like a business. They collect utility collections from their hangars, they have the FBO payment that they receive rent from every year, fuel, fuel flowage fees for fuel that is dispensed onsite, land leases. But before I go any further, I've provided you with all of the detail at the back of all the lease payments, if you wanna see who all those come from. Rochelle does a really good job on getting all of those detailed for you. And then also, the line item expenses for 2019 and 2020 are located right in back of there also, if you have questions as to certain revenues. The total revenues in 2019 that we're projecting is a million, three twenty-six, two hundred, and in 2020, a million, five oh one, six fifteen. I think I'll have Rochelle come up now. She has, when we talk about salaries here, she has a need for another maintenance worker, and there is a memo in your packet that details the issue of why this additional person is needed. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. We are requesting an additional operations maintenance personnel just to be able to provide a better, efficient service at the airport. We have eighteen hundred acres of land, runways, taxways, highly federally regulated by TSA, FAA, everybody else, lots of infrastructure as far as buildings go, and we just need additional staff to be able to perform our job a lot better than we are currently. With the additional staff, we are looking at having that. We're also doing a, potentially looking into doing a staff assessment for the airport. We like to compare ourselves to Manhattan Regional Airport and kind of look at where they have been and where they are now, and kind of compare us and kind of structure our growth at the airport, similar to that, as far as staffing and looking at improving security, going from a partial security plan to a full security plan is a lot of work, and we're gonna be, future years, asking additional staff with that. So we're gonna start the process with the request for additional personnel for next year, and then hopefully by the time this, this time next year, we'll have a staffing assessment completed, and then that way, it will provide you a little bit more hard facts on the future staffing needs at the airport.
Sounds good.
So that brings total salaries and benefits for the airport at four hundred and eighty-three, three twenty-one in 2019, and five eighty-nine, seven hundred in 2020. When we go down through the operating expenses, the contracted tower service that we've always budgeted for, line fifty-two, fifty-three, you'll notice doesn't have any dollars in it in 2019 or 2020, and the reasoning for that is?
We've had some help from Senator Moran doing some legislation. So what was proposed is air traffic control towers that currently provided a benefit cost ratio payment of that if they've had twenty-four thousand employments or exceeded that number, and 2014 would no longer be eligible for that cost, the city share portion of that. And so our airport, along with four to six other airports, fell into that, so therefore we're no longer required to pay the city cost share of operation for that tower.
Wish that really helped out, because there are some expenses that went up due to the major storms that we had this year. Repair equipment, fifty-three, seventy, point oh four, is at forty-five thousand, six fifty, up from the budget of twenty-five thousand. And then also, repair runway and field, we had a twenty thousand dollar budget. It needed to go up in 2019 to thirty-three thousand. And the rest of the expenses are pretty normal here until we get to the next page.
So the airport and the security, and they, so TSA, are they hired by our airport, or are they hired by the federal government and they pay them?
The federal government, and they pay.
Okay, and so they're just provided here?
Yeah, so the city of Garden City only staffs six full-time people current, or seven full-time people at the airport with two seasonals, and we are, handle more the infrastructure of the airport. So we don't do the check-in process, any of the airline process, any of the TSA, that's just our staff.
So the police officers that's there, is that, is that paid through the police department, or is that paid through the?
It is, it's paid through the police department, and there used to be some help from the TSA to provide that since the airport's location is so far from town. Also, our, our services, the aircraft rescue and firefighting, and all the equipment maintenance as far as the fire trucks and everything, that comes out of the fire department budget. So we do get a lot of help from the other departments as well.
I know you mentioned that there were some increased costs, but with, I mean, I know we budgeted like seventy-two thousand for the contracted services. Is there any way that we could probably put that, make that like a reserve fund or something for future use? Just a suggestion?
We kinda reallocated it into some repairs that we had to do due to the storms.
Right, but.
And also, when we get into airport improvement, we had to come up with funds for the, let me see here, the tower voice switch, three hundred and twenty.
The three hundred thousand for that, right? Okay.
And typically, we do have a large cash carryover, and that was one of the benefits of this year is year after year, building that balance, and since we had such a harsh winter, and a lot of expenses that were not necessarily expected, we were able to use some of that cash carryover. So we will be building that backup, and part of that funding is some of the contract, the savings that we have from that contracted tower service.
Thank you.
So under Airport Improvement, six zero zero one, there's three hundred and seventy thousand in 2019. That takes care of the tower voice switch, three hundred and twenty thousand, and then concrete repairs for the asphalt reseal, that's the entryway road.
And the beacon light, is that in there?
That is in Fund Sixty-One.
Okay.
And then new equipment, other, is another larger line item that we have here in 2019. That takes care of a snow plow for landside, and it's, that is not FAA eligible, a hundred and fifty thousand. You wanna talk about any of these as we bring them up? We don't wanna wait till you.
Unless there's questions.
Okay. Then it also takes care of a spreader for the Oshkosh, twenty thousand, a skid steer, sixty-one hundred, a bobcat push plow, eighty-three, hundred and forty-five dollars, a loader with a push plow. As you can tell, we're taking care of snow. Two hundred thousand for it, and then a golf utility vehicle at seventy-five hundred. That's all the 2019 expenses. In 2020, the expenses are a hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred. That is also for the skid steer at sixty-one hundred. Then we have a flatbed truck with generator at sixty, a plow at sixty, and an Oshkosh plow at sixty. So there's a hundred and eighty-six thousand. When we come down and look at the total expenses for the airport, we're at a million, nine thirty-five, eight sixteen for 2019. We're carrying over a million, eighty-two, oh sixty-seven. Keep in mind, a million, a million of that is K A A P money, so we're really only carrying over eighty-two thousand. But we better ourselves at the end of 2020, we're going from the eighty-two thousand to two hundred and twenty-five cash carryover, so. Would you like to talk about any of those pieces of equipment?
Not unless you guys specifically have questions. I know we refer to the snow and the horrible winter storm that we had. However, we all know that's not gonna hopefully happen year after year after year. We just have an aging fleet, and we do use a fleet replacement. We have, quite honestly, neglected replacing of fleets in the past, and it just all hit at once. So unfortunately, we have a lot of expenses in 2019. However, we will allocate those and spread them out over future years and be better about replacing them versus waiting until they absolutely fell us in a dire situation.
Fund Number Sixty-One is Airport Improvement. We carried over a hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight oh five into it. We have some grants going on in 2019 that I'll let Rochelle talk about, and then we also have some new ones in 2020 that are reflected here.
Yep, so the 2019 grants that we have been awarded already was the Airport Lighting Control Monitoring System. It's basically the system the air traffic control tower uses for the light control at the airfield. And the second one is the beacon replacement, which June eighteenth, you should be reviewing bids on that and construction to follow later this fall. Twenty twenty, we're looking at possible, there's two projects that we're looking at, depending on which one the FAA approves. More than likely, it's gonna be a taxiway Alpha replacement. The project was originally completed in the early two thousand and four, two thousand and five era, and it was kind of a rough project that we received fifty, we only had to pay about fifty percent of the cost because the concrete did not meet specs, and so it wasn't the best of projects, and it has now failed through the winter and everything, a lot of the potholes and everything, and we can only patch so much before it becomes a hazard to aircraft with all the fog coming up, the debris from the pavement. So more than likely, we're gonna replace a section of that next year for a federal project, which will be ninety percent funded by the FAA and ten percent from the city cost.
And where was that at?
Taxiway office south of the Apron Two, approximately the intersection of twelve-thirty.
What, are you gonna apply for, for that, a grant again for the building?
So the, the, the terminal project, as we're aware of, we did not get selected for the supplemental AIP project. The normal AIP that we go through for the million-dollar projects every year, we are not eligible to apply for that for the terminal project unless the city has our portion, which would be roughly twenty-plus million dollars. The FAA will only allocate some of those funds if we can design and construct within a two-year period and have the, the remaining match of that. So at this point, we're not even eligible to apply for that funds due to the requirements on that. Now, there is talk, there could be potential additional AIP supplemental funds, again, another round of that in the upcoming years, and we are also looking at different options to possibly get some grant money to fund that project. So we're still working on it, we just weren't awarded the original grant that we requested. A lot of the awards that were received were for taxiways and runway projects that are a higher priority in the FAA national system versus terminals.
Sounds good. Thank you.
The AIP projects do not require any debt issuance on those, we do have the cash available currently. At the next meeting, we're gonna be reviewing the general fund expenses along with the revenues, but there are two programs in the general fund. One of them is Fannie County Economic Development Budget Request and also the Downtown Vision. So they're gonna do a short presentation here now, so that you don't, we can save a little bit of time at next meeting, so you can go ahead and hear their requests now. Is that okay?
Yeah, Melinda, can I ask a question about?
Sure.
Let's, let's talk just a little bit about the terminal, because it certainly past commissions have looked at these big projects coming up and created saving streams or reserves, something along the lines to try and start building towards this, thinking that we are going to have to put the bill, or at least put, you know, gather twenty, thirty million dollars. Is there any, any place you see right now that we can start building that, other than just cash carryover that we've talked about, but like specifically for the idea that we're building towards a terminal?
That's kinda hard to answer when we're under a tax lid in order to, because the airport is one of the taxing funds, so it comes into the equation. If, you know, you could go to an election every year, probably, if you wanted to budget three or four million to put aside, because I'm sure that three or four million would throw us into a calculation where the tax lid would require an election every year. So it's kinda hard with the airport being one of those taxing funds to build money that way. I'd have to give it some thought, but maybe at next time's meeting, we'll have a little bit of a strategy we could talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Good afternoon, and our request, which I think you have in front of you, is the same as it has been for a number of years. It's the eighty-two thousand, five hundred. We've been able through sponsorships and memberships to keep our expenses and whatnot pretty even, so we don't have anything additional. We're not changing the request that's before you, but just as a note, the state of Kansas is going to be reinstituting the Main Street program in 2020, and as a result of that, there are a number of requirements that we have to abide by, and those will come with a cost. There's a couple of conferences, there's some trainings. There'll be a requirement on my part to volunteer a certain number of hours in other communities helping them with projects, so that will add probably a couple thousand dollars to expenses in 2020, which we didn't plan on when we put this in, but we're still leaving our request as is.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great, you should have had our budget request in your packets as well, and you will see, excuse me, as you've probably read in the paper, that we did ask for a pretty substantial increase, really from all of our partners, based on their previous allocations. In previous years, we've been able to carry over quite a bit of funds each year, and we use that somewhat as a cushion. So instead of asking for budget allocations for the total amount of what it costs us to operate, we were subsidizing with some of the carryover, instead of putting those funds in a CDE or an investment, as some organizations would do. We've operated on those funds. So we've been really clear about that for a lot of years, that our operations funds were dwindling. We started the organization in two thousand and seven, there's been some misconception there's, that there were reserve funds, if you will. The organization was started with a hundred thousand dollars when it started in two thousand and seven, when it separated from the Chamber of Commerce. So if you wanna call that a reserve, but they operated off of that for the first year. So, and really, our savings have come as a result of coming in under budget on as many items as possible. So, and we do, we have asked for a pretty substantial increase. We have already presented to Fannie County and the County Commission, as they do with all funds, took it under advisement, and hopefully we'll know where we stand with that. When they finish up their budget process, I'm not sure what, where that will, where that will go with them. They do allocate a quarter of a mil to economic development, but obviously have the opportunity to go above that as necessary.
What are we doing presently?
And so at the top of that, you see that in two thousand and nineteen, you funded us a hundred and forty-five thousand, and we've asked for an increase to two oh five.
Ms. DeBolt, is this, just to clarify for me, so does this budget request in the total reflect an increased budget overall for you, or just a reflection of that deficit of not having that carryover anymore? So you're not planning to add additional positions, add additional services, it's just?
No, that's just what it costs us to operate. Yeah, absolutely. And we'll get into that a little bit more, because we actually did performance-based budgeting, and we provided the documents for you. We've always done priority-based budgeting, performance-based budgeting, however you wanna look at that, from our standpoint, as we created those budgets. But since the county switched to a performance-based budgeting system for all their departments, we opted to show you how that looks in the packet as well. So that second page just shows you the breakdown. Number one, of our funding and where it comes from as far as our member entities, and then the population percentage of just the population that exists within the incorporated cities. So the county population, if you will, that's not affiliated with a city, is not included in that. But really, we just wanted to be able to show that obviously our funding is in line with our member entities' population. The next page is kind of an overview of real property valuation and the impact that economic development has had on that. And the, the chart at the top of that is just the real property valuation, so it does not include oil and gas, because we obviously have no control over the oil and gas valuations. But if you look at that chart below that, what that shows you is, had we not had the real property growth that we have had over the last decade, the valuation of the county would have been severely impacted by that. That, that line at the bottom is showing you the oil and gas and how it dwindled over the last decade, and if we hadn't had the real property growth, we would have had some pretty significant challenges in meeting budgets. That next page indicates that. So that's mil levy projections, and what we did was just took across the board, said, what if valuation had been ten percent less than it was, twenty percent less than it was, or fifty percent less than it was? And that shows you, this is the county's mil levy, so it shows you what would have, what the county would have had to do to the mil levy in order to sustain the same level of spending that they have maintained over the last ten years. And then that bottom is- And then that bottom is just really a chart of our percentage of real valuation, because obviously you can grade us pretty well. If the property valuation is growing, that means we're probably doing our job and growing residential and industrial and commercial opportunities for our community. So it's, it's kind of an interesting graph to just see what percentage we have. And then the next page really is, is just kind of outlines that priority-based budget. In 2015, that was the last year that we had an office manager on staff, and as you can see, 30% of our budget was dedicated to administrative costs instead of being allocated to our priorities. Obviously, we have to have administration, but we prefer to spend our, invest our dollars into the priorities that you've given this organization. So as of 2018, if you look, that, the administration piece was down to 9%, and we were able to significantly increase our marketing of the community, both to business and industry, but also to new residents who we desperately need to choose to make Finney County their home and work in our businesses. And then for 2020, as you can see, we've been able to reduce that even a little bit further and taken that down to 8% of the budget allocated to administration. And then really the last paragraph, just an explanation of what each of our roles entails, what our primary functions are. Obviously, I'm the president and CEO. Nicole is the vice president of community development. Shannon is our strategic analyst, and Scott Ost is our director of communications. Because we don't have an office manager, I'm typically in the office between 6:00 and 6:30 every morning, because once we unlock the door at 9 o'clock, there's no gatekeeper. So most of my administrative type work, follow-up with projects, designing site plans and those types of things, most of that happens before we unlock the door, or in the evenings after we lock the doors at 5:00. So that's just one of the things that we opted to do, and we're good with that. But we also do all of our own cleaning. All of our tenant maintenance is performed mostly by me, and some of the cleaning is done between Nicole and me in non-operational hours. So, just so you have a better understanding of how we've chosen to allocate the dollars we have, we want to make sure that you're getting the best investment that you can get, so. Any questions on that?
So within the marketing, because that has been the proportion that has really expanded and kind of really changed the look of your, of your apportionment over the time since 2015, can you specifically state all of the things that are encompassed within marketing? Obviously, there's the Garden Street Journal and the Facebook page and those kinds of things, but what other things kind of fall within marketing?
Yes, so within marketing, we also have, can you?
Good thing I brought my assistant.
Within marketing, we also have things like this. So the area relocation guide was, is a product that we created through Economic Development Office. As part of the workforce connection, which we also oversee, there was a lot of demand from our employers about a welcome packet, if you would. How do I get my new employees to know what's available to them within the community? So this is one of the products that we produce. This is largely Nicole, with assistance from Shannon and Scott. Obviously, I'm collecting information, and Scott, I'm making it make sense. So a really good product. It's available online on our website, and we're able to update it consistently, so we don't print it in advance, because obviously restaurants change, insurance companies, those types of things. So it's completely editable. Anytime we add a restaurant, we can add it into the guide. If, the school district, for instance, has visited with us, if organizations want a significant number of them, if they're having significant new hires and they want 100 copies or whatever, we do have a deal worked out with the print shop at the community college that they'll print them for us on nice quality stock and so forth, so we can provide those as printed materials as well. Also, this is an estimated restaurant demand guide. We have one of these for retail as well. This goes through and takes all of the national franchises and, and franchise, franchises and corporate restaurants and retailers. The other guy takes retailers. It takes them and divides them by what area. We've divided the community into different retail sectors. It determines which sectors that particular franchise would fit in. We're able to utilize this with realtors and building owners. We had a business owner, a building owner who came to us a few weeks ago and said, hey, my tenant's moving out, I've got this building, here's where it's at, can you help me market it to a potential franchise? So that's what we do. We go through and we can say, what's their minimum square footage requirement, and all of those things, so we can play with that. So these are kind of a combination between marketing and strategic analyze work, obviously, but again, allows us to market the community better to outsiders. So, and I would say, yes, it looks like marketing costs must have gone way up, but remember that we shrunk administration, so we reallocated those dollars to, to marketing. We didn't add dollars, we reallocated to our priorities. I just want to make that.
So is the, is the work with the, the Early Learning Network, is it done through, is that where you have the community development? Is that under that portion of it, or is it workforce, or is it a combination, or?
Yeah, most of that is going to be in the community development. So Makerspace, any work we do to assist them is, is also considered in community development. So community development really is about the things that improve our quality of life or meet the needs of our existing workforce or existing industries. So that's really where we try to, we try to kind of divide out what each of those is. Obviously, a lot of those lines get blurred. You know, when we're dealing with project development, if we're dealing with a specific new industry coming to the community that has a significant employee base, obviously, we're going to work on childcare and all of those things, workforce training, all of those are going to be combined in a project. But we still try to keep track of what amount of time is spent on which piece of that.
What else?
Looks good. Pretty well self-explanatory.
Well, we try to use a lot of words. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So the city does have a line item in the general fund budget, and we budget one mil for economic development, and so the 205 would come within that number that we have budgeted for, so. The balance of the fund.
And one mil is how much?
We're looking at 221,000 this year.
Okay.
And then, any money that's left over goes into the joint fund with Finney County on economic development?
We, we also have a, is it 1.3 million or 1.5 million reserve fund to use for bigger projects if we needed, or am I just thinking that as something?
Are you referring, excuse me, are you referring to the deal closing fund?
Yeah, is that this?
Yeah. That's the remainder she's talking about, your one mil, is what you send over as your contribution to that fund? And it is somewhere around, around 1.3 million right now?
Nice.
Very good. Anything else for me?
See, I listened to you, Melinda, when you tell me about those funds.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Forgot about you. We might have left you out there.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, we were having a meeting here, could you please get in?
It's a punchy group today, it really is.
Mayor Commissioners, that, that brings us to item F, which is an executive session. We don't anticipate any action needed after that executive session, so if you'd like to give, give consideration to the consent agenda and then do commissioners' reports, we can conclude with the executive session and, and shut Channel 8 down, so. If that's okay, consent agenda would be items G1 through 4, unless there's something you want to pull off. I will let the, let you all know that the county commission did approve the animal shelter interlocal agreement that, that is item G1 on your agenda today. They approved theirs yesterday.
Okay. Move that we approve consent agenda, items G1 through G4?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, G1 through 4. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Dick, you're up.
Just reminded that Beef Empire Days participated in all the events that you participate in, and it's still glorious thunder. Hamlin is doing a encore presentation, or the high school's encore presentation, that I heard is very good that they're taking it nationally, June 7th at 7:00 PM. And then also went to an event at the library with a special celebrity guest reading by Matt Allen from the Dolly Parton Imagination Library kickoff, where any child in Finney County under the age of five can get a new, can get a brand new book every month. You just have to sign up, and it's a partnership, it's not a way, so that's a really good program for our youth of our community to get library books for their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrew.
So I appreciate Beef Empire Days. If you've never been to a lot of events, there's tons going on, and so last year, the mayor and I got to ride in Kia Soul together, but we attracted no attention but all the animals on the car, the kids called out, so. But Beef Empire Days, the overall brings a lot of dollars into our community, and it's a really neat event. I also want to thank the commission. We had a wonderful time at Zubuli this past weekend, about 686 screaming, running kids, going everywhere, and I don't know how these kids made it throughout the day, they had to be exhausted, but hopefully parents, yes, thank. So I think it was a really great event, especially the thing is benefiting the high schools, hopefully those prevention programs that are happening up there. The other thing I just want to, just remind us, I really appreciate the work the commission is doing and asking questions, and, and also, I just want to mention that all those who are running for commission, it's, it's hard to step up and throw your hat into the ring, and that might be a colloquialism that a lot of people don't remember anymore, but, you know, when you say yes to something like community leadership, it is hard. And so I just want to encourage each one of the city commissioners, candidates, to come to commission meetings, ask any of us any questions. We are here, you're just socially, I know Matt is, and Matt and Jennifer are also available, and I know that several have reached out to him, and so I just want to say thank you ahead of time, because you being involved changes the conversation. It really revitalizes our community, energizes our community, that these, the things that we are deciding here make a difference. So, thank you.
Commissioner Burns.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to see all the folks who are running for local government positions. It's, it's, it's a privilege, but it's also just so exciting that people are engaged and, and wanting to serve, and that's really important, and talking about what a public servant is, and all, I think all the folks who work in government, no matter your role, you are a servant, and, and working for the better good. I guess I've, I've been thinking in my head about how to mention this, and I guess it's just something that I want to say that I hope we all kind of take a moment, and I'm sure we've all taken a moment to think about, but there was a mass shooting at a municipal building last week, and several people were killed, and it just goes on to, again, echo problems within our society, thinking about local government, not only the servants and the folks that work there, but then you also look at the local legislation and the state legislation that may have been able to prevent the, the large magazine sales that that shooter had available to them, and that had actually been in the state legislature in Virginia. So your vote matters, looking at the policies that people are talking about matters, and it, it comes down to the safety of the folks that you work with and the, and the people in your very local community. And so I, I don't know that I have a particular point to make, other than I just wanted to highlight that, because we hear about mass shootings all the time, and yet I don't want it to go unnoticed or unexamined. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Sessner.
Well, on that high note, I'd just like to thank Bob for, Quint for his recognition for the safety award. It's great to see that they're stepping up and recognizing issues that help our employees work in a safe environment, so congratulations to him on that. Wanted to congratulate and thank Matt and Jennifer. They helped to organize and lead a lot of the Leadership Kansas efforts and areas. The Leadership Kansas team for 2019 visited the community last week, and we're the first stop in a number of communities around the state, and we set a high bar. We do have one of our staff members that is in the leadership class, Ally Medina, so congratulations to her for making that, and she'll learn and appreciate 39 other friends that she'll make in the next couple of months in this journey across the state of Kansas, so. But thank you to you too for helping to get that organized and put together. I know it's another big event that we put on, but it's, it's something that highlights our community and the special things that are going on, so thank you very much. That's all I got.
Okay, that doesn't leave me much. The, I thought the pre-meeting was good. I, the learning center, I didn't really, I mean, I've been there. When they have the police night, community night, we go up there, and, and that's about the only time I've been up there, but there's always a good turnout in that Mary Street 307 or whatever it was. So I don't know, that's, that's another issue that we're going to have to address at some point, and see if we can help out, or, or maybe some of the businesses can help too. Appreciate DeBolt or being here, one of the candidates and for city commission, so appreciate that. I think it's good that they come, everybody, you know, that's running comes and sits in on some meetings and see what it's all about, especially this budget session, so. Other than that, that's all I have. I guess we'll go into executive session with Matt and the commission. Who else? Is that it?
Yep, just us.
And it's 306.
So I think 10 minutes is sufficient, if you think it's.
10, okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, the governing body, go into executive session pursuant to KSA 7543, 75-4319 B1 pertaining to personal matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations because of this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. In this, we'll have the city commission, Matt Allen, and the item being discussed.
Specifically on the evaluation of the city manager.
Specifically on the evaluation of the city manager. For, until?
317?
317.
All right.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session with Matt Allen and the commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.